Town Council Public Forum, public address on Monday, January 8th. We're going to have to start the meeting now, and the time is 6:50. We have one person so far, Mrs. Gerald Gray. Is that -- okay. Okay, Ms. Gray. You have -- we have three minutes on the thing, but since you're the only one, don't go overboard, but five minutes is fine, okay? Remember, Mr. O'Brian's getting on in years, we've got to watch out for him.
Please take it to the microphone, Mary. For Bill's sake.
For Bill's sake, okay. The heart of hearing. Okay, I am Gerald Gray. I'm from 29 -- I am of 29 Shoreline Drive here in Stratford. And I'm just going to read something I put together. In November, Stratford voted in another Republican mayor and also replaced multiple Democratic town council members with Republicans. Since then, I attended, as I do monthly, the meetings of several of the almost four dozen town commissions, agencies, departments, office holders, of which the members are mayor-appointed and then council-installed. As a note, I want to say I'm usually the sole Stratford resident non-member of these in attendance at them. While I've never seen Mayor Harkins attend any of these meetings in the past, after the election, he showed up at several, and he was greeted with warm accolades as members reveled in the great election victories. Mayor Harkins said he was sorry about how things had gone in the past two years, and he promised that now things would greatly improve as the agendas of these commissions, agencies, departments, office holders, and the party would so comprehensively prevail. And so I say to Stratford residents, which I guess I'm not going to be speaking to any other but the council, are you aware that the office of Stratford probate judge is a politically-elected position? Are you aware that the probate judge works hand-in-hand with the town aging commission, the town senior center staff, town DSS, Adult Protective Service agents, Stratford Police Department, Stratford Redevelopment Agency members, and town attorneys in the municipal process of stripping Stratford-located persons of their assets via IRA, involuntary redistribution of assets, as said assets are then redistributed into their pockets and coffers as payment for their services and so preying upon Stratford-located victims? Are you aware that Director of Stratford Senior Center, which is Baldwin, Diane Petersky is also the mayor-appointed head of Stratford's Aging Commission, and that she at-will banishes people from Senior Center, claiming she has full power to do so as she must answer to no one except the mayor? Are you aware that the mayor chooses the attorneys who represent the town in the town's predatory lawsuits against town residents, property owners, and visitors in towns' actions of taking possession of preys' assets for purpose of revenue generation? Are you aware that the town attorneys and contracted attorneys represent town agents, municipal employees, politicos, and police department at all in defenses of lawsuits brought against town-engaged parties? Are you aware that Town of Stratford lists many hundreds of lawsuits, thus bringing to these town attorneys and these town contracted attorneys millions of dollars payment for their fees, fees predominantly paid through by expense to Stratford taxpayers? Are you aware that the Town of Stratford, in the Town of Stratford Housing Authority, through the hands of Stratford town attorneys like Mr. Florrick, is engaging in unconscionably predatory and improper, above-the-law Housing Authority lawsuits against mentally and physically disabled and elderly Stratford Housing Authority tenants for purpose of municipal revenue generation? I will close by saying that I witnessed Mr. Malloy in action. I agree with Mr. Khan that Mr. Malloy demonstrated better qualities in character than that which is so horribly pervasive in the machine that is the politics that runs Stratford, and his resignation is a loss. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Since there's no more people signed up, I'm going to adjourn the public meeting at 6:55. Thank you, everybody. Regular meeting will start at 8 o'clock. It's a town monthly council meeting. Call the order at 8 o'clock. I'd like to ask Mr. Pia to do the pledge allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh heavenly Father, grant us your guidance as we are gathered here this evening in carrying out our duties to our townspeople and helping to make our town a better place in which to live.
First item is Mr. Ticky. Is there a motion for approval in a minute?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I move that the reading of the foregoing minutes be dispensed as copies, therefore, have been previously provided to each council member, with the same being and are hereby approved.
Mrs. Danchow.
I second that motion.
Second from Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion on this?
Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I may not recall correctly, but I believe Bill Perillo was at the last council meeting when we signed up on the high school podium. So, under council members in attendance, Mr. Connor is listed twice, which he does have quite the presence, but that would be -- that's the correction I would offer.
Mr. Perillo, this is a council? Counsel?
This is a friendly amendment to the --
Yes, if there's just a correction, you can accept that, and we can vote on it with that change.
Okay, we're going to make an amendment, change my name to Mr. Perillo. Is there any other changes that need to be discussed? If not, all in favor, approval of minutes, say aye.
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 Nays? Council votes, chairman votes yea, motion moves 10 to 0. There's no ceremonial presentation awards. So, the first thing is, Mr. O'Brien, do you have a motion for a letter of resignation for Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, I move that the resignation -- excuse me. I move that the resignation of Thomas J. Malloy from the Stratford Housing Authority be and is hereby accepted.
You have a second, Mr. Perillo? Second, is there any discussion on Mr. Malloy's resignation? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0. Mr. Ticky, is there a motion on Ms. Garfalo?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the resignation of Evelyn Garfalo from the Stratford Housing Authority be and is hereby accepted.
Is there a second, Mr. Perillo? Second by Mr. Perillo. Any discussion? If not, a call to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? Motion passes 10 to 0. Now, we will ask the mayor to give her first report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Happy New Year to all of you. Nice to be here together.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off the report by saying that we were very fortunate to have been awarded a Complete Streets Grant for $450,000 to complete the technical improvements along the portion of Barnum Avenue to Main Street to Southeast Broadway. The project is one of several that has been identified as a high priority for Stratford's 2017 Complete Streets Plan, and it's intended to enhance the access and safety for bikelists and pedestrians. Upon the completion of the technical design, the town will be positioned to begin implementing necessary improvements. Approximately $250,000 of the grant will be set aside to cover the costs associated with any environmental contamination discovered within the project boundary. Not that we have any environmental contamination in Stratford, but just in case we do. That was funny.
We smiled.
You smiled, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to report to you that I have appointed Christopher M. Hodgson as the Stratford's town attorney. Mr. Hodgson is a senior partner with Birch &amp; Moses in the Labor-Employment Practice Group. He has been practicing labor and law in Connecticut since 1985. He is rated as AV by his peers in Martindale-Hubble, its highest designation, and has been included in the Best Lawyers in America since 2010, New England Super Lawyers since 2008, and Connecticut Super Lawyers since 2007 in Labor and Employment. He is a graduate of Cho-Rosemary Hall, the University of Vermont, the University of Richmond School of Law. Attorney Hodgson is admitted to the Connecticut Bar, to the U.S. District Court in Connecticut, and also the U.S. Court of Appeals in the Second Circuit. And there's a lot more, but if you'd like any further information about Attorney Hodgson, I'd be happy to fill you in another time, rather than reading it into the record. The budget for fiscal year 1819, we have begun the process of developing the administration's proposed budgets for the next fiscal year. We will be using a zero-based budgeting method, rebuilding all departments' budgets from the ground up, with an eye towards maximizing efficiencies, eliminating that which is unnecessary, and providing a town government that operates lean. Winter storm update, as you know, the first major snowfall of the season this year lasted from late Wednesday evening, January 3rd, through the morning hours of Thursday, January 4th. Public Works did an excellent job during that storm, which delivered a very powerful punch, more than predicted, and additional challenges of visibility, low visibility, or actually, zero visibility, as I witnessed myself, high winds, extreme-low temperatures, and very icy conditions. I was in hand in Public Works to observe the impressive operation they had there, clearing the town's 200 miles of roads, 400 lane miles. The town has 844 roads and 86 town buildings, including schools, parking lots, and sidewalks. It can take up to 20 hours following a storm to complete the cleanup. We just want to remind residents that we have some extreme cold provisions in town when we have the warming stations for every firehouse, and those who need heating assistance can obtain it either through community services or through the Senior Services Center at the Baldwin Center. Earlier this month, earlier last month, we had the pleasure of honoring several individuals who have served the town of Stratford in elected capacity for 20 years or more. Thirteen elected officials. Our names are on the plaque, which is on the wall over there by the press seat. The press bench is that first one over there on my right, their left, and you could -- I'd love for you to go take a look at it after the meeting tonight. We also had the presentation in council chambers, and that was witnessed and involved Representative Gresko and McGordy, as well as the family members of those that were honored. And the ones that -- the people that have served the town 20 years or more are Alexander DeLlel, Rosemary Herman, Leonard Polmutter, Ray Vacola, Raymond Vacola, Carl Shalonic, Arthur Drittenbass, John Harkins, Joseph Janosco Jr., Hugh Catalino, Terrence Terrybacker, George Doc Gunther, Lawrence Larry Miller, and Skip or F. Paul Kerme. The Army Engine Plant update, I have a report from the Army Corps of Engineers from the November/December activities. They have ongoing coordination with Connecticut Deep, U.S. EPA, Point Stratford Renewal to Discuss Treatability of Findings and Remedial Alternatives in Coordination of Work Treatability Testing to Complete, and the data is being evaluated. Alternative screening and cost estimates for dredge alternative evaluation was performed. Plan January activities include the final dredge alternative evaluation for incorporation into the FSS, continued screening for remedial alternatives for de-watering, stabilization, on-site placement, off-site disposal, perform and design a level survey. And the last thing that I'd like to mention is that we have been awarded, or we have applied for, an urban action grant for Route 110 near Sikorsky. The Urban Action Grant is through the State Department of Economic and Community Development for road improvements and traffic and safety modifications for motorists and pedestrian traffic on the Main Street Gate by Sikorsky Headquarters on Route 110. We are working in coordination with the Metropolitan Council of Governments and Sikorsky Aircraft and other stakeholders to facilitate this grant application of $1,546,564. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there any questions to the mayor before we move on? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chair. In regards to the CIP or CEP, the budget last year proposed approximately $15 million combined in expenditures, and another 40 for this year coming up. So, we've not passed CEP or CIP for the current year. What's our plans for the current year, and how much can we guestimate that we'll have available for next year?
So, the 40, are you speaking about the Stratford High bonding?
No, it would have been in the CEP book in addition to the Stratford High, just a list of other projects that were prioritized for year two of last year's budget. There may be $100 million worth of wishes in the CIP, but we can only do so much in a year, and we've probably done about $10 million to $12 million on average each year. So, we may not do any this year, but how much could we guess would be available for the upcoming year?
So, I hesitate to guess, and I am unsure as to whether we will come to you with any ideas about this current year, this current fiscal year, since we're already more than halfway through it. However, you never say never. And I think as we go through the budget process, we will have a better idea of what projects we still want to move forward with, and the workshops are going to begin internally through the administration, of which you will be invited if you'd like to. I only hesitate to say that if we invite the entire council, then it has to be open to the public forum, and that's not the purpose of the workshops. So, maybe we will ask you to represent, have some representatives to be present at certain meetings, so you can hear it from the ground up, and then we will propose the budget to you, and then you will have your own series of budget workshops. I think normally that's what has to happen. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but that's the thought that I had in going forward.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the mayor? Mr. O'Brien?
Thanks for the very positive report, the first of many, I'm sure. But prior to the storm, I heard the announcement that we were enforcing alternate side-of-the-street parking. And I'm wondering, do we issue tickets? Do they tow? And I ask because I went down Allendale today, and there are two cars plowed in with snow, and they must never have been moved.
So, the answer is yes and yes. Well, thank you for the comments about the positive report, and we did tow, but we only towed when Public Works could not get through the streets, and we needed people to move their cars. So, the police operate -- I wasn't present, so I'm only giving you hearsay, but the hearsay came from my husband, so you can count that for what you'd like. They, the police, you know, went on the air horn, they knocked on people's doors, they ran the sirens to get them to move their cars before they towed. And most people were accommodating, and they moved their cars, which was great, and then they had to, they did have to tow some cars. I think it's a last effort, though, a last-ditch effort, to tow people's cars. It's not what it's intended to be, but if you notice, if you, as you go through the town and you see the streets that didn't have cars on the side versus the ones that did, it's night and day, the difference. And when you need to have an emergency vehicle that needs to get through, it's really, really hard if people can't either move to the side or find off-street parking so we can at least plow one side of the road. And I promise to you that our communication is, as we improve, as we get better at this, people will know ahead of time whether we're going to do alternate side-of-the-street parking or what model we're going to use.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Mr. Kadim?
First, I will just say thank you very much for the report. It's very good to know what's going on going forward. I see that you have a plan, and I'm happy to see that. Once again, to all our members that are here and yourself, congratulations, and I'm looking forward to working with you. And also, where are cars going to be taken once they are towed? Because I'm quite sure I'm going to get phone calls about that.
Well, I do not know, and I don't know if anybody's here that can answer that question. So, I am going to have to provide you that information tomorrow.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
I just had a quick, just a clarification on the Army Engine Plant. You talked about dredging. Did you, is that in addition to the dredging that was just completed on the Husatonic River, and this is an additional dredging?
Yes, yes. The dredging that has happened on the Husatonic River is in the channel, and the dredged material went to Hammond asset. This dredging is in the salt, the tidal flats. It's closer to the causeway and closer to the plant. The sediment is different than that channel sediment or channel sand or material. So, yes. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're going to move on to now appointments. At the current time, we don't have any appointments. The committee reports next. We're going to work, Mr. Pia is working with myself, and we're going to get the committees together through, vet it out. So, if you know, speaking to everybody here, if you know anybody who wants to be in a committee, submit it to the mayor's office or my email, we're all active, or any of the council people here. Next item, 4.2.1 Building Needs Committee. Mr. Poisson, is there a motion?
Yes, so they can make a motion to approve item 4.2.1 as stated.
Mr. Khan, can I get a second motion?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, is there any discussion on this motion? Yes, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. In regards to the Stratford High School project, I may need to direct this to a member of the Building Needs Committee itself, that there's, let's say, two categories of expenses. One is that is what is planned, and then what is contingency, those surprises that have to eat into that limited amount of money that was set aside. So, what I've asked the committee to do is, when they bring these requests for expenditures, is to categorize them as either part of the plan or part of the unexpected contingency. And so, that's my question. Are these part of the plan, or are they part of the contingency, and can we have that clarified on a go-forward basis?
Is there any one of the council people that's still resigned to this committee?
Alan. Alan is here.
Alan's here. Alan, Mr. Llewellyn, can you come forward to the, can you, did you understand his question?
I believe so. I'll state my name and address for the record. I'm Alan Llewellyn, 949 Huntington Road. So, I believe under item A, the $43,00801 for RFI is 66 and 81, this would be part of the contingency in that there wasn't sufficient ability for the design team to be able to draw this up until the actual construction was underway, and they were able to ascertain the conditions and the details, specifically with the masonry work at the stairwells. At that $43,00801 amount, I believe that's the only amount that needs a formal council approval as it's over the $25,000 threshold.
Does that satisfy you, Mr. Khan?
Yes, and on a go-forward basis, maybe a footnote for each of the requests?
Sure, I'll take that under advisement, and God willing, I'll be working with Mr. Poisson and the rest of the Building Needs Committee shortly.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we just state that Mr. Llewellyn is also the chairman of the Stratford Renovation Committee. That's why he was up there.
For the record, Mr. Llewellyn is the chairman of the Stratford Renovation Committee. Yes, Mr. Kadim?
Thank you very much. Mr. Llewellyn, I know you sat down already. Could you please come up for one more moment?
You don't have to restate your address.
It's been a while, I'm out of practice.
No problem. So, all the things that we've done in the past few years working on this project, this is not new money. This is money that we already have allocated, so it's not asking for anything new, is it?
Exactly. It's all money coming from within the construction budget. It just wasn't done, wasn't allocated. And Turner, actually, for some situations like this, they set aside a separate pool of money because there were certain parts of the scope of work that they couldn't buy from the contractors until they physically got there. So, that was the case with this item.
Appreciate that. That's important. Thank you. And I know those guys usually stay on budget, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim.
Thank you again, Mr. Llewellyn. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'd like to call it to a vote. All in favor of this change order being approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0. Now, we're to the town attorney's report.
I would just like to thank Mayor Hoydick for appointing me. It's a real honor to serve the town, and I appreciate it very much. I would also ask Attorney Leclerc to briefly report on several successful matters that were resolved recently by the town attorney's office.
Thank you, Attorney Hodgson. The first matter is something handled by Attorney Florrick. It was an appeal, a zoning appeal, Red Bluff Rita versus Stratford BZA. The Bridgeport Superior Court dismissed Red Bluff's appeal from the ZBA decision. The ZBA had upheld the decision of the zoning administrator, so the zoning administrator's decision stands in that case. The next case was Town of Stratford versus Robert Belsky. This was a case where Birch &amp; Moses handled. We recovered the full book value, over $26,000, for a police car that was totaled. The defendant was operating a vehicle with a, owned by a defunct company, using fleet plates from an unrelated business where the insurance company declined coverage because of that. Nonetheless, we recovered the full value on the police cruiser. Second case we handled at our firm was Isabel Vargas versus the Town of Stratford. This is a woman who fell on a patch of ice on the sidewalk at Boston Avenue, 305 Boston Avenue. Her medical bills were over $33,000. We filed a motion for summary judgment, arguing that the property is located both in Stratford and in Bridgeport, and Stratford is not responsible. Prior to arguing the motion at the Bridgeport Superior Court, she voluntarily withdrew her claim against the Town of Stratford without us paying any money. And the last case we handled was John Doe versus Town of Stratford. That is a case that had potentially large exposure. John Doe is a name for a minor male who claims he was sexually assaulted and abused by a teacher employed by the Stratford Board of Ed. Once we finished with discovery, we were able to establish that none of the assaults occurred during town-sponsored events, and we moved for summary judgment again on behalf of the Town of Stratford. The court granted the motions, so the case is dismissed as to the Town of Stratford. It is proceeding against the Board of Ed and the employee, however, there is insurance covering them as opposed to the town. So, that's another good result with no payment by the Town of Stratford.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the town attorneys? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're moving on again. We're going to, we've already asked questions to the mayor. I used to remember they were together, so we've already done that. Now, we've got some unfinished business. Again, the mayor has given us an update on the Stratford plant, so we don't need that. We're going to go to tabled items. Mr. Pia, would you make a motion to take 6.2.1 off the table, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the item 6.2.1 be taken from the table.
Is there a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Second by Mr. Harden. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that the revised fee schedule for the Office of Planning and Zoning is appended to the agenda, be referred to the ordinance committee, as this item must be in the form of an ordinance.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mrs. Danchow. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0. We're going to leave the dog part on the table for the time being. Mr. Khan, can I get a motion for you on 6.2.3?
Yes, Chairman. Motion is to remove the center, 6.2.3 Center School Resolution, to remove it from the table.
I believe we're going to, motion to strike.
All right. Okay, if we can go straight to strike, the motion is to strike item 2.2.3 from the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. Any discussion on this? If not, a call to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0. Motion. Motion. The next 6.3, all the way down, we're gonna leave that on the table. We're going to do appointments now on the Arts Commission, and I have a motion to take 6.4.4.1A off the table.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pia, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. And it's the first person. Do you have a resolution?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I move that Lou DiCilio be-
Mr. Chairman, you first have to have the vote on taking the item off the table, please.
Let me back up a little bit. We have to vote to take it off the table. So, all in favor of taking it off the table, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, member pass, motion passes 10 to 0. Okay, now, Mr. Pia, can I get a motion to, for Mr.?
Mr., yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that Lou DiCilio be and is hereby appointed as an alternate member of the Arts Commission.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Mr. Tiki, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 10 to 0. Next one, Mr. O'Brien. Can I get a motion to take 6.4.14B off the table?
I make a motion to take it off the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Motion is off the table. All in favor, I'm sorry, any discussion? If not, vote. Any, all in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 10 to 0. Now, Mr. O'Brien, can I get a motion? A motion to appoint Ms. Debbie Gilbert Taylor to the Arts Commission.
Oh, yes. I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Lost my place here.
No, that's okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mrs. Danchow, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0. Okay, we're gonna go all the way down to the Center School remediation grant. Mr. Pia, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move as follows. Whereas it was previously resolved that the Town, the Stratford Town Council may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development the assistance agreement and all other documents deemed necessary to obtain state financial assistance, i.e. the Brownfield Grant Funds, in the total amounts of $1.25 million. It was further resolved that Johnny Harkins, as the mayor of Town of Stratford, was authorized and directed to execute and deliver the transaction documents on behalf of the Town of Stratford, and to do and perform all acts and things deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the transaction documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such transaction documents. Now, be it resolved that the Stratford Town Council does hereby authorize and direct the Brownfield Grant Funds obtained by the Town of Stratford to be utilized to remediate, abate, and completely demolish the structure known as Center School located on Sutton Avenue, in addition to any other, any and all other actions within the scope of the transaction documents or otherwise necessary to complete remediation and demolition of the aforementioned property. Said actions not to be in the violation of the relevant portions of the Connecticut general statutes.
Is there a second for Mr. Harden? Second by Mr. Harden. Is there any discussion on this grant, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chair. Center School's been a topic of contention for a number of years. When we just moved to strike an earlier proposal, it was due to no substitute ideas on how to reuse Center School. Itself has come before the council over the last two years. So, I agree that it's time to move forward with the grant. I just wanted to add a couple of caveats or concerns. One is that the grants for 1.2 million, some of that's already been expended for the remedial, excuse me, the testing that occurred, and it's possible that will require more money from the town in order to complete the cleanup of the property. So I just wanted to make us all aware that it's 1.2 million may not complete the job, that there's possibly further financial risk. The, the building is being removed because, not because it was not a productive educational facility. Up until the day that, up until two years ago, it housed three educational programs with about 140 students. The gym in the facility were actively used for many community services. Those services have all been successfully relocated to other places within the town structure. So the building's been empty. The building's not being demolished because it's in an environmental condition that's any worse than any other educational building in town. Every one of our school buildings has PCBs, asbestos, lead paint, et cetera. It's just that those hazards are in a stable state, and they do not affect the safety of our children. So by moving, by removing the property, the building, and remediating the property, we don't yet have a plan for the future redevelopment of the property. But I want to give recognition to the Economic Development Commission and the Stratford Center Subcommittee that they've made a fantastic effort over the last year to hold public forums, to get community input, and to inventory what our priorities may be. So with that inventory developed and the money available, and the building having no other purpose, it's time to move on and exercise the grant.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kadim, you go first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Center School's been around for a little while. I've actually used the gym, refted the gym with Sterling House, and programs were done there. I actually toured the whole building. Seat, the C of O took me around, went on the roof, went underneath, looked at it as a well-structured building. And I really believe it could be used to do some beautiful things in the community. I mean, just the fact that when you go on that block, it's such a peaceful neighborhood, the people actually care about their homes, curb appeal, and it's a quality of life thing. So, you know, whatever we're doing going forward, as long as it doesn't affect the residents to a strong degree and is beneficial to the town, to the fact that if it was going to be a business or businesses there, that it would put us in a position to even lower the taxes. Because if we keep doing all of this, this building and building and building, and the taxes keep going up, it's a problem because something's not working right. So if you have, you have all these condos going up on Main Street. It's a lot of revenue coming in. You know, also you have, where Fort Keegan is, I don't know what happened with all of those buildings there. They should have definitely put us in a position to have a lighter tax base because we're bringing in more money, as well as all the other condos that are constantly being built in a small area where we are, we are a town, not a city. So we kind of have that town feeling. If we keep changing that, it's gonna be too rampant. So I think it's a good bill. I think we should use it, and Board of Ed definitely does need space because they have portables that they turn into permanent portables. But going forward, like I said, I hope that something is being redeveloped if it's gonna be torn down. That's gonna benefit the town. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would just like to, I've been working on this project as a member of the RDA Subcommittee for almost the last year. Before that, working with the Economic Development, being a member and the vice-chair of the Economic Development Commission. So I'm very familiar with the Center School project. I would like to thank Economic Development, MSBETO, MetroCog, and the RDA and RDA Subcommittee for all their work and due diligence on this. To Mr. Khan's point before, we held three very successful charrettes throughout the community over the last year that were well-received by many people. I myself attended two out of the three as a member of the RDA Subcommittee. I interacted with many people. And many great ideas were put forth, of which we have documented and retained. So going forward, we are looking to the public for their opinion about what we put in that property to better help the town. And to Mr. Kadim's point, I want to see it used as something to help lower the tax base as well. And this is a great grant, and I thank everybody for the hard work that they've put in over the years on this. There's been a lot of hard work going back many years, and this is a culmination of it tonight. So to all of you, thank you very much for that.
MSBETO Conservation Administrator, I just want to speak to Mr. Khan's concern about a possible shortfall in funding for the demolition of the school. So, should the bids come back for demolition at a cost of about 1.6 million, which is what we're expecting, that would leave about a $400,000 shortfall with the project budget. DECD has already spoken to us and said that there's a possibility we may be able to get that additional funding from them as needed. We could also work with our partners at MetroCog to see about getting the extra funding to demolish the school. And just as an FYI, if we were to renovate the school as new, we would still be responsible for abating all of the hazardous building materials, which would come with a $1.5 million price tag anyways. So either way, we're gonna have to be spending that money to abate the hazard. Did that answer your question, and do you need anything else?
Thank, MSBETO, hold on.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, MSBETO. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I can't let the discussion end without thinking what Center School meant to me. My teach, my sister taught there for many years. And then, for a good 20 years, we ran our Sterling House basketball program there four, five nights a week and Saturdays, three months throughout the year. And when I found out we were gonna lose it, I was devastated. But as you said, Mr. Khan, we got great help from the Board of Ed and from Amy Nor and Economic Development helping us relocate, and it's worked out fine. And this is gonna be a great step in, for economic development. How many times we hear people complain we don't do enough for economic development in town? And this is gonna be another big step forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Tiki.
I represent the 2nd District, and when I was campaigning, a lot of the historic district community, not all of them, but a lot of them, are against taking the school down. Tonight, I am going to carry their voice forward and be in opposition of this.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? If not, we're gonna bring it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 8 to 2. Public health emergency prepara, Ms. Danchow?
Mr. Chairman, I move as follows. Whereas the Yale New Haven Health System Corp. is authorized and has made funds available in the amount of $36,346 to extend financial assistance to municipalities in the form of grants.
Is there a second from Mr. Perillo?
Second.
Who is first? Mr. Kadim? Second from Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? This is a grant. Andrea, if you could come up, please, and-
Andrea Boyce, I'm Director of Health. I'm just here to answer any questions. It's an annual grant that we get, and the fiduciary usually is the State Health Department, but they're reorganizing things, so our fiduciary will be the Yale New Haven Health System.
Is there any questions for Andrea?
I don't have a question, but I, again, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you do at the Health Department. And truly, all the information that you give us is, you know, very great. And I thank you for looking for these grants and all these other programs that you host there at the Health Department. So I want to just thank you for all the hard work that you do, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
There's no further questions and no discussion. I'll call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 10 to 0. And now on 7.3, for the record, I'm gonna sponsor this. There wasn't someone designated to sponsor this. Mr. Pia, is there a motion to, on 7.3?
Yeah, Mr., yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to table this. Excuse me.
No, no, I don't think so.
Send to ordinance.
Yes, send to ordinance.
I'd like to correct my statement. I'd like to make a motion to send to ordinance.
You confused me for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Danchow. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. Just gonna beg for a moment of everyone's time. My concern with, you know, some ordinances, well, essentially, my concerns relate to the town's charter. They don't re, they do not involve literally the blight officer position itself. You know, the power to appoint persons to employment belongs strictly to the mayor. The members of the council cannot interfere with the mayor's, who the mayor chooses to hire, or how the mayor administers the employees of the town. But the council is required to make and alter ordinances, and therefore, you know, we're required to research and investigate appropriateness of existing laws and how those laws are protected and regulated by the town employees. Now, the ordinance defining the town's anti-blite program, of which this amendment is relating to. That ordinance was created in 2008 by one town council, and it was approved by Mayor Myron. A different town council then re-approved it in 2010, and it was reauthorized by John Harkins. Therefore, two different councils approved the definitions that were included in the anti-blite ordinance, and two different mayors authorized those definitions. So why is it today necessary to amend this ordinance that was four times, at least four times, read into law and acknowledged as valid? So, my concern is in the duties of the mayor. I've had some discussions with the town attorneys, and I want to thank them for being patient with my inquiries and for responding in a way that tried to mitigate my concerns. But I still have this bug, if you will, about duties of the mayor. The second one listed, out of the 15 duties assigned to the mayor, the second one is the enforcement of all laws and ordinances of the town. And there's many other duties, such as the very final sentence it reads, "The mayor shall have additional powers provided that they are not inconsistent with the charter or the provisions of the general statutes." So again, Rich Ferdet has done a fantastic job as the town blight officer. We need a blight officer. It's, it's an asset to the town. But it's in regards to how his position was moved from the zoning department under this proposal to the Health Department. And the concern that the mayor can make a change in, a change that essentially the ordinance says he belongs in zoning, the mayor says, "I'm gonna change that and move him somewhere else." Tonight, we're going to, in a sense, formalize the mayor's decision, but it's the chicken or egg. Does the mayor change, does the mayor override ordinances and then wait for the council to catch up? Or, as we knew last June, we knew like eight months ago that Mr. Ferdet was intending to run for a zoning seat. He has every right to run for a zoning seat, but let's avoid this conflict. Let's avoid this potential collusion, if you will, by, it should have been changed, in my opinion, prior to, the ordinance should have been changed prior to the mayor making the move.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to call the question. This discussion should be done at ordinance, not here.
All in favor calling the question? Do we need a second?
Second by Dave Harden.
Second by Mr. Harden. Okay, what we're doing, just so we know, we're sending this to ordinance for more evaluation. That's this team here. I'll just make one comment. Mr. Khan, I understand your concerns, but there's virtually no one here from that. So we have to go through the procedure, okay? All right, having said that, I'm gonna call it to vote. All in favor sending this to ordinance, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, your vote is actually on calling the question to end debate by the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, folks. Okay, we're calling the question now. All in favor of Mr. Poisson's calling the question, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, motion passes 9 to 1.
Now you, now you call for the vote on the question.
Now, we're gonna call the, again, sending this to ordinance. All in favor of sending this to ordinance and the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes 9 to 1. Thank you. We're on to new business and appointments. Oh, yeah, okay. I guess that's a little- I guess that's the little one I passed. Yeah, okay, is there anybody, make a motion to, on 7.4? Mr. Harden, 7.4?
7.4, authorizing resolution of the Town of Strafford certification. Resolved that the Town of Strafford, Town Council may enter into and, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Vision of Emergency Management and Home Land Security, Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection, and, and any documentation which it deems to be necessarily appropriate or appropriate. It's further resolved that Laura R. Hordick, as mayor of the Town of Strafford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documented, documents on behalf of the Town of Strafford, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry, have the terms of such documents, including but not limited to, excuding, excuse me, deliveries and all agreements and documents completed by which such documents, undersigned, the town clerk, further certifies that Laura R. Hordick holds the office of mayor, and has held the office until December 11, 2017.
Okay, Mr. Harden has put a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, Mr. Pia? Is there any discussion on this?
Clarification, sir?
Yes.
Um, the last sentence that now holds the office and has held the office since, I apologize, makes sense to me now.
Makes sense, okay. There's any, any discussion at all? If not, let's call it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. We're gonna go to 8.1.1, appointment of council clerk. Mr. Pia, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I move that Margot Paquette, Margaret Paquette be and is hereby appointed council clerk effective January 9, 2018, at a salary outlined in grade five, step six of the current employee's salary schedule, and that the current council clerk, Carol Cabral, be retained as a special assistant until February 2, 2018, at her present salary, in order to assist in the transition of the office.
Is there a second from Mrs. Danchow? Second from Mrs. Danchow? Any discussion on this? Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you. Just a moment to thank Carol for her years of service, her dedication to the council, and for giving Margot a chance to hit the ground running. Thank you.
Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, Chair.
I echo that sentiment. Ms. Cabral, I knew her prior to being on the council. It was times when I'd be coming from work, and I couldn't get down to sign my name, so I can speak about the issues that concern the town, as well as the district I lived in, and she would always be accommodating, so I love you so very much, and I'm gonna miss you, and thank you for all your service.
Any other comments? I'd like to echo, if there's not, I'd like to echo, Carol, Carol was the one that, I don't know if this is good or bad, but Carol's the one who recruited me 25 years ago to be a Republican, and here I sit, so, thank you, Carol. Okay, we're gonna call it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. On the next committee appointments, we're, it's tied to what I said originally, we're gonna be doing, vetting out the rest of the list, so everybody here, in any audience, if you know people, send in your resumes, either the mayor, or myself, or any of your councilmen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Should we still make a motion to table the, the appointments?
Thank you. Okay, motion to table 8.1.2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Kadim.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. We're gonna go down to now, um, the Library Association, we're gonna go all the way down there.
Gotta table the other ones, Jim.
I'm sorry.
Have to table the other ones, too.
Oh, yeah.
Can't just skip them.
Okay, um, is there a motion, table 8.1.3?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table 8.1.3 and 8.1.4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Any discussion? If not, call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Motion to table 8.1.4?
I'll make a motion, table 8.1.4.
Okay.
I did.
Oh, we did both, okay. All right, so now, we're going to 8.1.5. The next, the next are all the same, all these folks want to be reappointed to the Library Association, so the first one-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that 8.1.5A, B, C, D, and E, all these members be reappointed to the library board as stated in the agenda.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Pia, second. Is there any discussion? If not, call to a vote. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Mr. Chairman, maybe you should just note, for the record, that the motion effectively states that for 8.1.5A, it is Frederick Streets who is reappointed, 8.1.5B, Barbara Poissons, 8.1.5C, Michael Aloy, 8.1.5D, Deborah Perman, and 8.1.5E, Tony Smith, were being reappointed to their respective terms, which expired. Which I just did for you, so just so noted.
I'm sorry.
Just agree with what I said.
Okay, um, well, we're gonna, we're gonna accept the motion to have Mr. Frederick, Frederick Streets, Barbara Poissons, Michael Aloy, Deb, Deborah Perman, and Tony Smith all appointed to the Library Association. There's no other further discussion, let's call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. On 8.1.6, can I get a motion to put it on the table?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Poissons, seconded by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussions? If not, call it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Can I get a motion for 8.1.7, zoning commission, to put it to the table?
I'll make a motion, put it to the table.
Mr. Pia? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Hart, Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes ten to zero.